Three, two, one.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the work session to order so we can start getting work and have a pretty long night, catch up on two months of stuff, so before you add the workshop agenda and the regular meeting agenda. The only thing that we'd like to add because we do have a piece of equipment that has gone down under I of four, we'd like to add a vehicle for the purchase for the sewer department. We'll go for that and get to that section. That's the only thing that I need, that I need in this emergency. Here now, if not yet, a copy to review your email from last week from the minutes from the prior meeting on March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, six p.m., any conditions or deletions or corrections to the minutes presented that you reviewed before. Here now, we add the agenda and the minutes to the consent agenda. No board appointments or proclamations. We'll step into Splosh, cover buildings for equipment sewer and parks department.
As far as the buildings go for the sewer department and parks, we've decided to go with the quality outboard products version. There are two of them in the quotes that we got. One is from the local dealer down here in Trenton and the other one is from Ringgold. We decided to go with one in Ringgold due to it being cheaper. Do you want me to go over the costs or?
So the first sheet of all three qualities is what's wrote in red is the current price?
I don't think it's the one wrote in red, no.
It's actually lower than what's there. It's lower, but what's wrote in red is lower than what's on the list price is why.
Right, that is the version because he accidentally added tax to that. So the crossed out part would be the tax version and the number beside it would be the amended without sales taxes.
So that's wrote in red that after the site is the correct price for the buildings is what I'm saying?
Yes. I don't know if we are looking at the same one.
Go ahead and give us the price for the park for the sewer plant.
The one for the sewer plant, the grand total was three thousand nine hundred and six dollars for the first one.
Say it again.
Three thousand nine hundred and six dollars. The second building.
Was the pump station at Walbrad?
Yes, sir, would be eighteen hundred dollars, one thousand eight hundred. And then for the park down there, it would be five thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a grand total of eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Are we having questions for Dylan from Christian Terry or anything?
We've been needing this for a long time.
Just to put equipment under, it's also the pump stations where the generators sitting outside in the weather. This is the hundred K that keeps Walbrad going. It's going to help us on maintenance and wear and tear on it. Keeping it out of the weather, helping, that's one of the generators we bought on that we got on the federal grant. And Terry's got some equipment that's sitting outside that we don't have anywhere to put it in. I believe the sewer department did get on another little tractor to help us keep the building and stuff together so it's setting out of the weather. Everybody good for the buildings? Okay. All right, the next thing, Splosh. Do you remember we bought a dry code during almost three years ago when we had all the storms and we had all the equipment? And we couldn't get up and we rolled around and stuff. We bought a grapple for the block ad to help with it. And we had this small track code which has been one, our other one was giving us so much trouble. We made three payments on that throughout the year and the time has come up to pay it off or refinance it and pay off on it is thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. So we paid one month's service on it because we didn't get to meet last month. This was going to be brought up. It was a thirteen hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-four cents monthly payment. And this is used between the street department and sewer department. Very valuable piece of equipment needed. So I'd rather, okay, we'll find this, go ahead and pay it off for the current Splosh, but pay the other parts with the prior Splosh.
So you're going to pay that?
I like to pay that. And then we talked about sewer department equipment. We had a truck that go down. It was a director, Duane Moller's truck that we had. It's got sixty-seven thousand miles and it broke a valve and messed up the piston and the block and head. It's not really worth repairing the motor, so we looked at a new motor. It's about seven thousand dollars and it's six to eight weeks out to get a motor. So we've been looking for some trucks. We had in this Splosh to replace a truck for the sewer department because they are having to pull the trailers and sometimes the generators around when we're losing power. And this little half ton truck is way too small and it's a pretty good strain of them. So since it's happened last, it happened Monday of last week, I believe, when Monday or Tuesday of last week.
I think it was the end of yesterday.
Yeah, so once we tore into it, seeing what it was, a county shop did, it was not, nobody reveals these things anymore, so. We'd like to start looking for a truck. We've been actively looking, see if there's anything available through any commercial trucks and state contract and it's pretty hard right now. So we would like to start looking and try to find something because that's a long time ago. Duane's actually been driving the pump truck, pump, the older shareway that we take to clean out sewer lines and stuff. Again, these guys are on the haul all the time and the price range from the trucks we're trying to find here, three quarter ton truck with a gas motor, six point two or seven point three gas, four wheel drive because they do have to get off road. Some of these places we take the pumps, generators or pulling pumps out or taking the trailer with a toolkit. We're looking at a three quarter ton to do that. Is the prices what we're finding throughout on state contract, if they're available, is between around forty-five thousand dollars to fifty-five thousand dollars range. When we find one, if it's what we're kind of looking for, it's gone or it's already taken. So we may have to step out of the range of trying to find one in the state if we can on state contract. We're in a little bit of a tight spot there. So just giving us thoughts on that, where we're finding that and what we might need to do to get it placed.
So who's looking for it?
Myself, Duane, Dylan, we've been actively looking. Duane has actually a conference this week. He's looked a little bit today in between and we're just trying to find it. When we find one online and call about it, it's either gone or it's fucking. So we're going to have, if we find something, we're going to have to jump pretty quick. So that's why we brought it up, brought it as an emergency.
So we need to put a dollar amount on it or something?
Yeah, I like to start in that range right there. And if anything goes over that, I think we could give you a call or text and see what we find. So we've got several places trying to find us something.
If you've got anything within reason, now it gets gone, so please.
Everyone we found is gone. Nobody's taking order on them right now too. And we know what the order process, we still haven't got Terry's truck, Mike's car, Jerry's truck. I didn't give his VIN number on that. So that's what we thought since we're in some buying here, one of those things. Alrighty. Alright, we had, we're going to step into number five and you can go through all that. The ordinances on zoning should be right behind the pump station rule of things. We received copies of this last month. Since we were going to be issuing the still spirit applications in the building of zones that could be within inside our current zoning, which is VR and B three. We had to amend the zoning provisions to establish additional use. We held a, we had a public hearing last month for anybody to come in and speak from the public about that. We had one, one person, an investor or a business owner inside, two business owners come in. One was not in the retail business for the still spirits and the other one was a renter, builder and realtor. So that was the only two. We stayed here about almost thirty minutes or more. So had no questions or denials of that, so the ordinance won to amend the zoning provisions established. Is there any, any other additions, deletions or questions by the commission? Or we do have the chairman of our planning commission here in case anything needs to be brought up or discussed again. This was a section that was just amended the current VR and B three sections. Everybody good with or reviewed it from last time? Yeah, well, everybody, I need everybody to say bye-bye. No, this, this was nothing that, this is not the original order. This is the one we had to have the public hearing on that we came out of. Last month and we came out again last week. You didn't mind that? Yes. Well, we still got three ordinances though. That's what I'm saying, is everybody all right with the zoning orders? To, that we, that the terms put up for us? Okay. The next one is we did not have an appeal process or appeal of license denial. And this goes for all alcohol, pop beverage, beer, wine and distilled spirits, which will be in Article six of the zoning. We had no appeal that was brought up in our work sessions. So we're discussing with attorney. It will be in section of that, so if application comes up, it was denied by, for some reason through our, through the office, through our office for reasons to have a chance to appeal it, they can appeal it to the planning commission. And then from there, if it's appealed again, it could come back to, back to the city commission. We had no appeal process at all for that, so that's the other ordinance that is sent to you on this last month. And the last ones will be the distilled spirits ordinance. That we all went through and worked on for all those work sessions and stuff. Anything on the distilled spirits? Everybody good with what we had, provision that was sent out and attorneys that marked up and sent back to you? All right, we also did take an event application for the nineteen forty-five days and Monda was going to talk about that. And you all have a copy of the application here?
No, I wasn't talking about it.
You might have said you were going to talk about it, because you requested it on the workshop here.
Well, I just, I didn't tell you. Well, it's, it's the nineteen forty-five day county fair that I guess this is the fourth or fifth one. We just, basically, the committee is asking the commission, the city to approve, to approve this application and it will involve closing a few streets. There's really no differences from the way we've done it before, except for we are, I say we are, they are, I am too, I guess. We're asking to do it a little bit different as far as the city being the sponsor. Not in, not in money, but just in name because it does help with the, the committee does not have to buy the insurance policy and they do not have to require all the vendors to buy the hundred dollar food permit. And, and you know, and this is the thing, what's so bad is it's these people that come to sell this food at this event, you know, it's our, it's our churches and our schools and civic groups. And, you know, they're having, they're having to put out a lot of money for this because they're, they're so strict. I mean, you've got to have this hard surface floor, you've got to have this canopy with screen on the outside, which really doesn't make good sense because, I mean, you have people cooking hamburgers with a little canopy over them with screens all around them and that couldn't have been safer to me than being out in the open.
Well, there is some restriction that they still put on the municipal government. Those still have to happen. Through prep area.
Well, I, I agree, but, but you know, like, I mean, I, I witnessed last year where the American Legion had to leave because they didn't, you know, they go and they do it everywhere else. But, you know, they come to the, to the city park to do their event and they had to leave because they didn't meet the requirements.
What we found out from that event last year in the Smoke on the Square that the county done is that the health department will allow the city and or the county to govern that, but you still have to meet certain things. The city and or the county can write a letter for events on the, at the veterans park for events at the city park. But we, because Chickamauga and Fort Worth and Ringgold done things like that, so we called around to see what they done. Especially a lot of the barbecue guys, they went, two weeks after the Smoke on the Square was able to participate, sell their barbecue and apply for it, but they still have to meet the hand washing station. That's where, that's where, when we, when we write the letter to the public health, we're saying we're going to make sure they're still doing that. Or the people that sign up to do it are saying they have to do that. If they don't, then that's, you still got to do it for the safety of the people and the food, for flies.
Well, there, there is a, there is a, a couple that's overseeing this, that, that is making sure that all that's being met.
Because if you, utensil falls, you got to wash it and another thing, instead you hand washing station. Most of them had a hand washing station when they prepared the food with gloves. It's just a water, a water container with a valve on it with a bucket. You got to be able to catch your own water and you add your soap and stuff and you wash your hands, dried it right there. The reason for the thing for the screen is to keep flies and stuff off the food, for landing and stuff. You prepare the food in that screen, put it in either it's wrap or a box, you hand it through to the table and stuff, is what, what they were telling.
They might still have to do that, but.
Yeah, that's what most of the barbecue guys are telling. That's what got our concern we had to meet because they're trying to do the Smoke on the Square again and the county commissioner ran in there with them and Christine and Breimer come up and met with us, or Christian Breimer come up and met with us, and that's what they said. And we found out from other two cities, that's what I was explaining, that they had a nice panel so what they have to do. It's the exact same thing they have to do, it just cuts out of the red tape of having to pay the hundred bucks.
And I mean, and every single one of them got to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and it's some of the things that we can relieve from, but they still have to meet the thing, the safety. That's the thing that if we're going to sponsor it, make sure they still, the safety required.
Well, they're going to meet the requirements. I mean, even if, if they're not relieved of the permits, I mean, they're going to do what they have to do. But it just, we just can make it easier, you know? I don't think they should.
I think we got to come up with a plan here, copy one of these cities and use their application and that, thanks for food being the, that they have to meet these things and it has to be checked off by someone that's going to make sure that it is. That's being safe for the public.
Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine. They're very well organized and they've got the manpower to do whatever they need to do. But it was just, you know, when you, when you, when it, it just, it just appeared that, that it was made so hard for, you know, like the, the band and, you know, the church groups and stuff like that. And we had several that, that did not participate because, because it was, you know. So that would be great if y'all approve this application and we'll be happy to, I'm sure. I can, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to do whatever, come up with any kind of plan. Because I mean, as it, as it is now, they're looking to comply with everything they did last year, so.
So you're asking for the city to be a sponsor for the help of that and do the insurance for liability on the vendors?
And, and I would like for, and I would like to ask that we still do the things that we did last year, like with the civic center and the pool and.
Garbage?
Well, actually, actually, Tag, Austin Henninger has donated his dumpster.
Yeah, but we'll have to pay across the scale, I'm sure. We did last year.
We did, we did our dumpster last year.
Yeah, but they charge us when we go across the scale.
Well, I know, but I didn't, I mean, I, I said, why would he do that when?
Well, he just offered his dumpster to put the stuff in. He'll take it across and just charge it to the city.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's fine. It just fits with it because we can't, there's a lot of trash probably.
It's a lot of trash, a lot of trash.
It's other local business.
And it's a, and it's a, listen, y'all, this event, I know most of you here do know that, but if you don't, this event is so well attended and it's so, I mean, it's worked on all year long. There's nothing thrown together about it at all. And it's very, very well planned. And this year, the headliner, you may know who he is, I'm sorry to say that, but I think, I think he sings to people a little bit younger than I do. Mitch Broseal, he's from, he's from, uh, Sand Mountain somewhere in Old Alabama. Now April Eve, she must listen to him. She's still rocking, y'all. But, but he, you can Google him. He is actually touring and opening for Garth Brooks right now. I'm touring with him right now. So he must be pretty good. And we was able to get him because he looked at it as an opportunity to come home and he didn't, he still didn't come free, but he came cheaper because it was close to home. So that's kind of nice to move out to Florida.
Do we have anything that we need to go over with the streets? Are we good to walk them? Have we done before? And so far, we're alive, still.
Yeah, I just need, commissioners that they're willing to do that with officers that are, if any road signs and cones in the civic center, they're all good with it, then that's all I need to prove.
Give a what about the cones?
Yeah, but any cones or road club signs that we can get from the street department?
Well, I provided all that last year.
Yeah, but I just need my sure you still are, I wouldn't approve it. I don't want to approve it without y'all knowing anything. I say we can't do that.
Police department will have extra trouble and services and stuff for that.
Yeah, the police department was really good last year and the sheriff's department. They had a lot of, but we, we needed.
It wasn't a big event, I noticed.
And we have a, a, they'll need to come see who queen is, who queen fairs come to. Ms. Elway's guest was our queen last year.
Still floating.
All right. The next thing is the meeting software. I brought this up about three months ago at assembly and you can see the type of there. The quote for the meeting software is twenty-seven, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Ask y'all to kind of look at the counties or the school boards. I can ask Daniel, I know he uses it at the school board, the e-board solutions and what we've used at the county. I really like it. We would have all this fumbling that we're doing here tonight. We could have different topics that you can click on. The public will be able to click on it immediately when we start building the agenda last week when we sent it out. Public can go on and look at it, look at all the documents we need, come here with a QR code. Once we give out and see it, it's really good for the public to see everything. It's quick. Hurting all these trees and, but they're, they're, just the meeting software is that price. It's a, it's a thousand dollar upfront fee that applies for the setup and training. And it's got unlimited training and support or a quota to charge. And after that, it'd be just twenty-seven fifty a year. But since their physical year is either July to June or it's, or it's that October to September, I can't remember. I had on my notes that we would only be paying two or three months of it upfront after we're around paid again for their physical year. So, but that's what it'd be. This would be something that we'll do out of our regular budget under administration. Just to be a year to year.
It's really handy with four meetings because it allows all of your members to view the stuff on their phone, on app. And you can go over the agenda long before you get here. If you have any questions that might come up, so short with meetings up.
So like, well, we, like we've been emailing everybody the month, month, last month, so it gives you all week to look at it. And then we'll finally attach when we get the final numbers on the financials, you see it. We posted the website as well. It's just, it's a lot easier to follow through. Everybody good with that? Or you all have any questions? You took the time to look at it and hope you have, it'd be a lot simpler. Just have to use your little mind time. Am I good? All right. We'll go right on into the regular meeting if everybody's good with that? We're going for prayer. Brother Eddie's, I actually have the conference as well. We're going to, they have the water and sewer conference in Jekyll Island this week. So go down there, get educated and get some of their items. We'll go ahead for a word prayer. So I pray, dear and father, we thank for the state, thank for the blessings of this city, these commissioners, our employees, all the thing they do to protect and serve this city and keeping it going. We'd like to thank all the hard work from our planning commission, the commissioners and public input retailers as we move forward on this ordinance and the changes in our city. And you know, your hand is born all this and what it will be, we just hope that we keep very calm and collective about it and work hard through this system and just be with us as we continue the business of the city tonight. and just be with us as we continue the business of the city tonight. Thank you for all you do, the precious man. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, this is a regular scheduled meeting, got some sacred money to every month. In May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, we had a workshop. And then we did road call, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Wood, Commissioner House, Commissioner Norris. We do have a forum to conduct business. We're going to the department reports and we start with Police Commissioner Norris.
Okay. The first one will be the March twenty-two report. The police department issued three hundred and seventy-six calls during, for service, uh, during March, conducted twelve hundred and thirty-six business checks, had ten burglar alarms, responded to six domestic calls, seven theft reports, thirty-seven suspicious activity calls, fourteen accidents, one hundred and thirty-four traffic stops were made during that, and, and, but ninety citations were issued during those traffic stops. The citations are as follows, there was twenty-eight speeding charges, nine driver license violations, five vehicle registration violations, one, uh, did you CSA misdemeanor marijuana charge, four insurance violations, one unsecured loading, one improper passing, eight hands-free violation, five falling too close, one unauthorized use of an ever light, one drug-related object, ten seatbelt violations, one disorderly conduct, two DUIs, one open container of alcohol, four commercial vehicle violations, fare to report accident with damage, one, two improper turns and five wind attempt violations. That was for March. And then for April, we're going to do April, get them all good. And then for April, we have eleven hundred and eighty-two calls for service, conducted nine hundred and thirty-six business checks, answered two animal complaints, responded to seven domestic disturbance calls, eight trespassing, thirty suspicious persons activity calls, but one eleven traffic accidents, one hundred and twenty-two traffic stops were conducted, resulting in a total of sixty-five citations being issued. Citations for those included twenty-nine speeding, four driver license violations, four vehicle registration violations, one improper passing, two no insurance, one wind attempt violation, two reckless driving, four fare yield, eight seatbelts, five unlawful use of wireless device, two violation of hands-free law, one DUI, one fair to maintain lane and one disorderly conduct. Collected fines for April twenty-two were eight thousand nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Collected fines for twenty twenty-two are standing right now at fifty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Parks and Rec, Commissioner Paxton.
Okay, I'll do April first. Community center was running ninety hours in April. Had six work orders for animal control complaints, one city dog bite, one county dog bite. Rec softball is still going on, so the fields are being, being took care of. And they started working on the pools, preparing them for the summer in Oakville. Okay, for May, community center was running eighty-two hours. Animal control, we had six animal control work orders or complaints and two bites in the county. Softball's still going on and the pool, they're still working on. Also, we have, um, a need for a couple of lifeguards, if anybody's interested in that job. And we have raised the pay to eleven dollars an hour starting off, so I, I hope that encourages someone to come down. Also, there's a, a few people I want to thank. We, uh, last month, uh, put the picnic tables in with the help of a lot of people. I want to thank Monda for letting us use part of her area there to store them. Some hurricane came down and, uh, dug the holes with pads. I want to thank, uh, Ansel for coming down helping with the concrete. And then there was Troy Sullivan and Kevin Metz who smoothed it out and, and with the pouring of the concrete. We also, Keith and Ronnie for working with, with us on the picnic tables. Thank, it was a, uh, effort by a lot of different departments and it really worked well. I think everybody's enjoying them and I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody know how much I appreciate them. And that's all I have.
Fire, the Jelley's, Commissioner House.
Okay, uh, the sewer department for the month of March had twenty-four underground locates, eight emergency locates, twelve sewer calls and two sewer line inspections. And for the month of March, the fire, the inspections were, um, six remodels, three site reviews, and they completed three electrical and HVAC plumbing inspections. The fire department had a total of seventy-eight calls and they were dispatched and canceled in route to fifty-two of them. Nine, the nine remaining were, the remaining were nine fire-related, three accidents, two medical and twelve standbys. Okay, for the month of April, the sewer department had twenty-nine underground locates, eight emergency locates, ten sewer calls, one line inspection and one sewer tub. And inspections, we had, um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six remodels and three new constructions, six completed HVAC and plumbing inspections. And the fire department had a total of fifty-nine calls and were dispatched and canceled in route to thirty-seven of them. And five fire-related, four accidents, two medical and eleven standbys. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wood, Street.
We serviced all our equipment, did road repair on, uh, we did some repairs of the lookout circle, Bullen Avenue, Oriole Circle, John Street. Uh, we did, you know, help with the, uh, help the parks department with the installation of the picnic tables. And it does look really nice over there if you hadn't been. And, uh, we are still looking for seasonal help as well. Our, uh, we're really down now because our, our supervisor's had surgery, so he's out. So if you know anyone looking for some help. Good grief.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bears are boring all week, but we did skip it. Skip last month due to a death of Commissioner House's father and Terry's, uh, father-in-law. We know all our folks are prepared with them on that and appreciate everybody working hard for the two months, especially during the time. We've had a lot going on, but appreciate all the work and consideration for all of that. But we'll get into, if you remember, we talked about the, in March, what we did, um, meet in April. So March, when we did meet, we didn't have the financials reconciled because it was so close. And I made a suggestion that we do the month in rear to help us consolidate, especially when we're down one person. That's just hard and so what we're gonna go over tonight is all the March numbers, which is the reconciliations and financials up to end of March. March ending, I have bank statement was eight hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and forty cents. Reconciliation followed. Revenues for the month of March was a hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Expenses for the month was a hundred seventy thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Year-to-date, general fund, January through March, um, percent of seven hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents, worth thirty-seven and a half percent of revenue. Expenses, uh, end of March was, uh, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and two cents, or twenty-five point five percent. March ending on our, uh, regular savings account, uh, is a hundred twenty-seven thousand, twenty dollars and forty-one cents. The reconciliation follows. Art funding is four hundred, one thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. We marked a year on this since it happened and we had to submit a, uh, to Department of Treasury report on that. We listed the, had to work off and on with that, but we did list the infrastructure sewer, uh, the barge drains and engineering that we've approved currently. And we have not expensed anything on that because that is currently the same thing that was, you know, there. By the end of this month or first of next, we should see the second half of that. If that second half comes in, we're gonna start the engineering and design for the, uh, solid spruce branch that will help the sewer department process the solids more. So the engineering was a big part of that. That's what we're trying to get out in that two weeks ago, uh, with, uh, Dwayne and myself and, uh, flat engineering, James Payton. We hope by mid-month or close end of this month to have documents ready to go out for requests for proposals to go out to meet the standards of the federal documentation and guidelines and it's fun to see what the effective cost is for the first stage one pricing. Sewer fund, uh, a hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, reconciliation follows. Sewer, uh, revenues for March twenty-two is forty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and eleven cents. Total expenditures is forty thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. January through March ending for sewers, a hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. The rate of charge for services at twenty-three point one percent. And total expenses for the year is a hundred ten thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, eighteen point six percent. Hotel motel fund for the month ending in March is a hundred six thousand, one hundred one dollars, ninety-four cents, reconciliation follows. Police department, uh, fund, yes, current police department fund is two thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, reconciliation follows. Current fire department fund is a thousand, forty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, reconciliation follows. Two thousand fifteen bond, current old splash account is eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and three cents, reconciliation follows. Twenty twenty-one splash currently is two hundred eight thousand, four hundred one dollars and twenty-eight cents in March, reconciliation follows. That would be, uh, my report and financials for, uh, ending March twenty twenty-two. I need a motion to approve the financials as read within your conference session.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Powell, so any discussion further on finances. Not on favor, say aye. Both motion carries. All right, we'll start with the parents and Ms. Elway's guests, tree city USA.
We did plant a tree down here, uh, City Hall in honor of, uh, the girl that had been the clerk for thirty-two years.
Cindy Robertson.
Yeah, yeah, Cindy Robertson, I should have just said that. But anyway, she called and, uh, left me a message thanking me for, for diet and she well deserved that, I, I, you know, I think it was thirty-two years, isn't that right? And, uh, then we planted two trees over at the high school, two over at the middle school. And, um, the other day, let's see, it was me and, and, uh, anyway, there's four or five of us and a kid helping us clean up there in front of the post office. So we've been pretty busy and we still got work on down there in the park.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Elway's, uh, Ms. Medley, Andrew, they can, oh, clock it.
Thank you all for letting me speak again on behalf of the library. Um, quickly, just a few things that happened during the month of April. We were able to hire a new library assistant, we were short-staffed for pretty much the month of April. And, um, Miss Bonnie Montgomery started last week. She moved here to Trenton from Ocean City, Mississippi a couple of years ago, right as the pandemic started. So we're really happy to have her, um, get started at the library. We had four school visits in the month of April, which was fantastic. We saw over three hundred kids based on that, just from Dave Elementary. They walked, well, Dave Elementary and then we had, um, special needs classes from the middle school and high school come over as well. Um, of those visits, I personally, uh, registered five, four to five families, I can't remember, of children coming back to the library after their field trip to get library cards and to check out a book. And, um, one of them actually stayed for our Pokemon League programming that day as well. So we're just seeing a lot of connectivity and collaboration with the schools that makes us really happy. Um, that leads me to a couple of new events that we started in April. The Pokemon League is one of them, we saw great turnout, multi-generational, which was a lot of fun. Kids, parents, teenagers, all hanging out doing Pokemon together. And if you're not familiar, uh, Pokemon League is really interesting. It is collaboration, it's problem-solving, it's math. A lot of people think it's just fun and games, but there's a lot of, lot of learning to be had there too. So we're really excited to have just started the Pokemon League. Uh, we also have a monthly scavenger hunt, which is considered a passive program. So, um, any of the kids that come into the library, we've got them scattered throughout, they pick up a scavenger hunt and it's sort of a learning tool about the library. It says stuff like, go find, um, Amelia Bedelia in the junior nonfiction section. So they have to think about, there's junior nonfiction, what does that mean? So that's just a really fun way and the kids are super excited. When they're done, they get a little prize at the end. And we started our teen advisory board, that is a demographic that we just haven't been able to get, to get into the library. So we have four young people on the advisory board, a few more that are interested and they are, um, gonna be instrumental in helping us guide our programming, guide our book choices. I think we've even worked something out with the Sentinel that we're gonna have, um, the teens working on an article to write for the Sentinel. So we're pretty, um, we're pretty excited about starting that program up. We hosted the election debate, uh, we had a lot of, uh, a lot of community members coming to the library for the election debate on April twenty-sixth, which, which also that day saw one of, one of the highest numbers I've seen since I've been in the library on a Tuesday. We had seven hundred and fifty people, uh, come through the doors of the library that day. So that was pretty impressive. We, uh, we helped collaborate with the middle school for an art contest supporting the, um, childhood abuse awareness month of April and we had people, uh, we had the five selections on the wall. So the library people came and voted and we saw, the one that got the most votes was our winner, that was Ms. Savannah Frazier. She is a seventh grader at Dave Middle. Um, her work is, uh, we posted on Facebook, it's, it's beautiful and very touching. So I encourage you to maybe hop on Facebook and have a look at that and congratulate her if you see her around down. Let's see, our calendar of events, we, uh, once again have events every week for the different age groups. Our regular ready to read program, which we've seen record numbers. Um, one day during, I think it was the month of April, we had thirty-five children come to ready to read. That was children, not even the parents and the caregivers. That's amazing because ready to read, of course, is what? Our program for preschoolers, getting them ready for school and encouraging literacy even at that young age. So that was really exciting to see those numbers just stay steady. You know, mid-teens all the way up to in the thirties for how many kids are coming every week to that program. Um, I'm super excited. If any, if y'all haven't been tuned into my presentation at the school board or anywhere else, we were able to get these play card passed. The play card is an initiative and a collaboration from Georgia Public Libraries and Georgia Public Schools. And what it does is it. And what it does is it gives every school child that's enrolled in a day county public school a, um, play card library card. So it's a moderated library card. They get five items they can check out, and it's a no fines library card, which means they don't have to pay any late fines. They would still have to pay for a lost book or whatnot, but no fines associated with that. Uh, we just rolled out the opt-out period, which allows parents the opportunity to say, "No, thank you. We don't want a public library card for our child." Um, so there's always that option. If you don't want that, otherwise, unless you opt out, your child will automatically have a library card, which is something I'm very excited about. We've seen the need for that. My visits to the schools have shown me that we have, we just have a lot of kids. It's that one barrier that some kids, I don't know why it's so hard to take that next step and go to the library, but kids can't get a library card on their own. They gotta have a parent take them, gotta show an ID. Well, now they can just use their five-digit school code. And even if they forget that school code, we can look them up and make sure that they can check out a book, uh, which will be really great when those field trip kids come over from the school. All the kids could go home with a library book if they so desire. So that rolls out May twenty-fourth, just in time for our summer reading kickoff. So I know that's the last day of school, but we are really excited that every child will have a play card and they can enroll in our summer reading program. Um, it's tracked through Beanstack. It's the same program they've used in years past. And, um, you can register for that starting May sixteenth on, uh, Beanstack backslash, or dot C H R L. I wish I had a visual, C H R L dot org. Uh, you can get registered for the tracking program. All you need to do is read twenty minutes a day. We've got some great prizes associated with that as an incentive to get our community reading over the summer. Kids and grownups, we do have some great prizes for everybody involved. So I hope that parents will also track their reading on that Beanstack app and, um, put their tickets in to win. Everybody that finishes the program will get a brand-new book for their home library that I've selected that is quality. Uh, children, young adult, and adult literature that I'm really excited about. And then we'll have, we have a bunch of other prizes as well for our summer reading. Um, let's see. I know that we talked about the paying jobs, but if there's any kids out there that wanna come volunteer at the library, we'll take it over the summer. That said, summer reading program brings in a lot of folks, and we would love to have some volunteers helping us, you know, especially on those Thursdays. Every Thursday, um, for seven weeks, we'll have special programming for the summer reading program. We also have some adult programming that's gonna be special over the summer, and of course, team programming over the summer as well. And if you're not aware, we have some really great printing services at the library. Some people did not know this. We have a large-scale, um, scanner and a large-scale poster printer, and we can print you a poster, and we can laminate it. Um, it's one of my favorite things. I love making posters for our different events. If you've driven by the library, you may have seen some of our, I've got one of those sandwich signs out there. And I usually put, whatever's happening that day, I put it on that sign out there to make sure people driving by can see what's happening at the library.
Appreciate all the hard work. I know the summer's a bit of a busy time. We're excited for the kids to continue to go.
Well, I appreciate it, and I probably need to talk to you afterwards. I know we've got, um, the Georgia Bubble Dairy is one of our special programs, and they breed a cow on a semi. And it's a big open thing, and, um, we'd like to park it in front of the, you know, right on that street in front of the library. So I probably need to talk to you, because I know they need special dispensation to maybe close that one off and allow kids to see, um, this big dairy cow that we're gonna bring in, um, in June. Check to, check about what we need to do to get that organized.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jane Dixon, lots of good.
Alex, I think something that I need to say before I start is it, um, you know, at one time in our community, times got hard. And one of the first things that got cut in our community was our library. And I think we need to remember that when times get hard, okay, of all the things that you just said, that the library is doing for children and adults in our community, it's just amazing to me that.
We, we do very well for them.
We, we do, we do, and we certainly do appreciate it. I mean, uh, literacy is, to me, is the heart of a community. And, uh, we, we have a lot of people who do not read.
Same for, uh, the commissioners and mayor before, we really done a good job. We continue that.
Yes, well, thank you, Alex. Um, I just have three short things to tell you tonight, uh, from the Alliance for Day One. First of all, Alex, for sure to thank you and your team of people here in the city who's, uh, came to and participated in the Lunch and Learn. Uh, a very interesting, uh, program there from Jeff and, uh, uh, Mike, yes. And so thanks all of y'all who came and listened and supported our government. Uh, we do appreciate that. The second thing is, Amanda touched on the, um, nineteen forty-five celebration. Uh, she is so true. That was such a wonderful event, particularly last year. I mean, Eloise getting to be queen, there were just so many things that just ticked it all off.
Tigray Brown was.
No, we didn't know if he was Eloise, but what does matter? It was so much fun, and there were so many people, and I had company from out of town, had six people, and I brought everyone out. And they just loved it. So it's just a wonderful event, and, uh, the Alliance for Day will be participating. We will be sponsoring again the watermelon eating contest and, I think, the hot dog eating contest. One of them, two of them we're doing anyway. Uh, so, uh, we'll be involved. And that's the kind of things we like to do, is to chip in and help other people, because we are always asking people to invest in the Alliance for Day. And the least we can do is split ourselves and move in and help people. So we do, and we really do like to do that. One other thing, the last thing to let you know, uh, you know Martha Baker's program, uh, First Connections, whatever the name is right now, but they are always now gonna be sponsoring, I believe, uh, the boxes that they have placed at a few locations in the city for children's clothes. Uh, we had, at the Optimus Club, we had, uh, Chris and Barrett and Martha come and explain to us, "What are we talking about? Our kids have clothes." The problem is, when they get to school and whatever the accident might be that occurs, sometimes it's Bill Mills, who knows what it is, but then the children have no clothes to wear. So they have, they are putting these boxes in different places, asking people monthly to go by and drop some things in the boxes. Um, they do request that the items be new, new clothes. Uh, right now, we have a box at the Alliance for Day that's right there on the square, right by the, at Thatcher's. So just think sometime when you're out and you see something on sale, and you see t-shirts for ten for a dollar, pick them up, ten of them, okay? And, uh, well, I'm serious. We, this is a, Martha, that's what she does. She rides around dump places looking for clothes for kids. So sweatpants, shorts. It tells you every month on what it is that they're looking for and asking you that you put them in. Now, in means that the kids in the schools are using them. So hopefully over the summer, they'll get a good stockpile, because kids will be coming back to school before we know it, before they even get out. So, uh, you can take your stuff into the Alliance right there, put it in the box, and they certainly will appreciate it. So we are sponsoring that with them. And there are a few other places around town. I really don't know right now where all of them are, but, uh, do y'all have one?
The library has one. I know the city did. Y'all have one right in your lobby as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so y'all do have one here? Okay, yeah. So please, everybody, uh, use that box, put some clothes in it, and the Alliance is helping with that. So if any of you have things that you would like to suggest to us that we could make a difference for, which you let us know. We will be having a large movement to consider, ask people to consider to invest in their community. Join the Alliance for Day, be a shareholder in this part of our community. So we're gonna have a big something a little bit later. I hope June's gonna be a little slow, because July is going to be pumping. So thank you, Alex, and the commissioners.
Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
All right, any legal matters? I know number four is the commission. Any unfinished business being discussed, commissioner? Not if any citizens' participation would like to speak to us tonight before we go into new business and consider items on workshop, presumably.
Most of the place, Jen. On the, uh, you were talking about the trucks that, that tore up this, this task week or so. Um, and you were saying something about the, to replace the motor would be like eight thousand and then?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand, uh, but turn around in time about eight weeks.
Four, eight weeks, six to eight weeks, probably told us about.
Six to eight. Um, if you do that, you know, that's, but, and then there's a forty thousand dollar vehicle that's being searched for around.
Forty-five to fifty-five range is what we run across.
Um, and if y'all go that route, what will happen to the older, the one that has torn up?
That truck is, we'd like to fix it, but we have an older one that we, we were gonna retire out. It's two-wheel drive, and what year model is that truck, Jen?
Two thousand and six.
We were gonna get rid of it and keep the four-wheel drive, because only got sixty-seven thousand miles.
I'll keep the, the one that's sixty-seven.
Use our, use our maintenance money to repay for player.
So when you get rid of, what, what, what's get rid of, what?
We put it on God deals. We have to surplus it through the commission and surplus property to put it on God deals and do other deeds that piss it. We usually, we've been using them since I started here. We've got a lot of surplus that we do.
We get more, we seem to get more money from that, and we used to do the options.
We can do sale deals in here, but we just quit that and let people. That's one of the things our department went through and cleaned a bunch of stuff that we could, uh, God deals. County down in the wild before we started, kind of, be off them, but they have, a lot of our stuff is in floodplains and in the backwoods and have to get there. So, you know, the vehicles do it. These guys are, go get a weekend off their own problem. They have to come in about every weekend or something. They go take twenty-three guys to come in. It never stops.
So the ones that's on call, they drop the vehicles home?
Yep. They have emergency calls. When you hear emergency locates that Chris had talked about, or we have a pump, if our pumps go down, they get alerts immediately, we gotta go.
So they, uh, just a question, whenever they are on call, is that every, is every employee? I mean, is every employee that's on call drives it that? Three employees. So those three employees drop?
They're right here, two of them are right here in the city, Dylan lives.
Tim Russell.
Russell. Because we're in the county. Sometimes it takes them all three to get in. It's a major problem. Then I'll come in and help them too. That stuff don't stop. Utilities and public safety don't stop. It's, uh, no days off, especially that stuff. Both Charlie and, uh, Charlie's in the city, just outside the city.
He did, John, Russell.
Okay, so I'm sorry. But you see.
So all three employees, Charlotte thinks it doesn't.
Charlie does, a lot of our locates and stuff is emergency located, been doing that. Testing issues that we have at the thing, I think Dylan and Dwayne swap out. They, like, they can't be gone. Two of them can't be gone at the same time. We have to work around that. For the companies. It's twenty-four seven, three sixty-five facility, sewer is, it don't stop.
But you, I, I just wanted to go, you're, you're naming forth, like, fixing the, the four-wheel drive, the?
We are fixing it, but with our director, who just don't have a vehicle, and he's gotta go. So we had already had plans and squashes for the current squashes first. We're just bringing it ahead before the gym, they're gonna have to be that. Can't even order, even where we ordered our car vehicles for patrol, uh, fire department and street, but anyone can't take over. Don't know, it'll be later this year, November, before they can order. And we're, tough times. But we gotta, plus we've been pulling our trailers and stuff with it. It's, it's probably what, probably, I could've heard it. We have generators that we have to move around on our power. We have two eighty-k generators bought on a mitigation grant for emergency management in the county that I help with. We bought three generators. Power goes out throughout the city. Our high pump stations, we gotta move the generators quick. There's, our pumps can't sit long, so they'll back up. When they back up, we're gonna need to be fined some permits. They can't get on the ground. We gotta keep it moving.
So, so when I take, when, I guess, since we're in the city, I mean, since the city employees drive the vehicles home, is that part of the benefits?
Considered, Wood, it's like our patrol one does, that we have patrol and drive them home too. But they're on call as well. They have a major thing, they gotta come in. It's, a lot of us in the government work after vehicles, and it is part of that.
Maybe they can't owe their taxes? Because I know as a government employee, that's?
You're, you're, I've been county employer eighteen years.
I mean, is it safer on your taxes? I mean?
No, I don't know that, no. I don't think so. Well, I don't understand how that would be on my taxes.
I mean, you're getting compensated. I mean, in, in, in a private entity, you have to count that on?
We don't have it anywhere local government.
Your government, yeah, your taxpayer.
But I'm on call twenty-four seven for day camp as well. Just like these guys are in gaps. Other workers, Timmy, if we have a rubble, when we had a storm just come through Friday night, they had to come back in and cut that many trees. Three. When we block a city rubble, we gotta go. We gotta come in and go. Timmy's, I mean, uh, director, most of the directors do have vehicles, Alamo Patrol. Both the Alamo Patrol guys are on call twenty-four seven as well. Ronnie and Keith, and they take calls to the county, we contract with the county. Any other questions? Now, we'll consider items under the workshop approval agenda, for more of the previous meeting minutes. Approval of squashed equipment, which were the cover buildings for the, um, sewer department and parks and wreck. Dylan, what was that total? You and I wrote an individual down.
I didn't, it was, uh?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand.
Did y'all somebody write that down?
Eleven thousand, six, nine, four.
Six, nine, four, eleven thousand, six, nine, nine, four dollars for three buildings.
Yes, sir.
Lay off the track code from, we purchased part of the prior squash for thirty thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents for parks and, for, uh, street department and we used to use for the sewer department. Uh, vehicle purchase from a range of forty-five to fifty-five, replaced the vehicle that, uh, lost the engine to replace for the sewer department. Ordances, uh, amid the zone provisions to establish conditional use for retail package stores of distilled spirits, which will be in zones B three and B R conditional. B R conditional will be based on where it's located within the city and B R zone. Amid the alcohol, uh, beverage, uh, beverage codes to add to appeal of denial. If anyone is denied for any type of malt beverage sales, wine sales, malt beverage, uh, by the drink, wine by the drink, or distilled spirits by the drink, or distilled spirits packaging. This will be the appeal process. And then number seven will be the distilled spirits ordinance that we come up with and works along with in the work sessions with planning commission and city commission. Discussion and approval of the nineteen forty-five days application, uh, event. And then the meeting software for assembly for two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and one-time initial fee, a thousand-dollar setup, training, unlimited support.
Any other motions?
Motion took set by Commissioner Wood.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Bowles. Are any discussions by commissioners? If not, in all favor, say aye. Motion carries, and if anyone's, uh, uh, motion carries, excuse me. All righty, no executive session, commissioners. Now we'll take a motion for adjournment.
How many votes?
By Commissioner Bowles. Adjournment? Say it. Chris, yours. All favor, say aye. Motion, uh, adjournment. Everyone, thank you for coming out.
Now, we'd like to say one thing before we leave on, so Dylan, how she's appreciated. The lines in school are getting smart this week, and, and that's why Dylan's here tonight. And, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you.